Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March 22, 2023. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at Gloucester High School Library at 32 Leslie O. Johnson Road in Gloucester, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. I will state that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. We are starting by going into executive session, and we will then return to open session to continue the rest of our business in public. So I will make a motion that we enter executive session for two purposes. One pursuant to the executive session, purpose three of Mass General Law 39, Section 23B, to discuss collective bargaining with the Gloucester Association of Educational Professionals. And second, the approval of Personnel Subcommittee Executive Session Minutes of October 22, 2020. And I salute. Okay, Ralph Hall, please.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Maia Verga.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Reese.
Yes.
And Chip or some Glancy.
Yes. Okay, so we will be back soon as we're done. We are, this is the Gloucester School Committee reconvening in open session on Wednesday, March 22, 2023. I ask that you join me. First item of business is oral communication. I will wait for introductions to the presentation. We do have a wonderful group of educators for this evening around the table for the public to announce. For oral communications, if you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. They use either of these options to spread oral communications to be recognized. Just, is there anybody in attendance that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to recognitions. If they have any recognitions.
Just a quick shout out to the O'Malley Middle School play, Beauty and the Beast. They did a tremendous job with it. Checking it out and really, really impressed by the work by the students, the staff, and such. So, great show.
You know, we have East Gloucesters Play coming up this weekend on Friday at 6:00, Saturday at 1:00. Peter Pan Jr., so anybody in attendance, please join and celebrate these kids. Okay. Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council, Kaya, thank you so much for being patient this evening.
Thank you. Um, so I said a few things, actually more than a few, but um. So tomorrow, we have NHS inductions that are taking place at 6:30 in the auditorium. This is one of the biggest NHS groups that we've had. We have 62 new inductees, and that's double the amount of kids we have on this year. Freshmen just finished up their candy grams for St. Patrick's Day. So students were able to go during lunch and buy candy grams to be sent to their friends, to their peers, like, and other students that would be sent out last Friday. Junior event tickets were on sale all of last week. We have around 180 tickets for junior event that's going to be held at the Cruzport. The prom tickets are going on soon. Prom is June 1st at Danversport. The senior banquet is next week at the Cruzport, and the centerpiece contest is like going. Everybody's trying to figure out what everybody's doing, but as we all say, nobody has done one better than Ms. Kathy Clancy.
That was my son, Neville.
MCAS will be in a few weeks, and then after that, SATs are coming around the corner for juniors. The senior countdown started last week, and we have 44 days until we're out of the high school. The spring sports tryouts have been happening all this week, and they seem to be going pretty well. Everybody's finding what they want to do this spring. Summer continuing sports from last year, it's going pretty well. The blood drive last Friday was incredibly successful. We met our goal, and we got a lot of blood, and I believe it was, every pint of blood saves three lives, or it might be more, but we were really happy with the outcome. The Spring Musical Anastasia will be performed by the GHS Theater Group on April 6, 7, and 8. 8, 8, yeah. Tickets are $15 for adults and $10 for students and seniors. The Electives Fair was held on March 15, where the class of 2027 was able to meet with students and staff and talk about opportunities at GHS and where their future four years at Gloucester High School could lead them. There was a successful college fair last week with over 85 colleges in attendance, open to anybody most, it was a lot of like juniors and sophomores, but it was open to everybody. Core selections have like kind of began. So for the class of 2027, they're all in motion, they're all in. And then I believe juniors, sophomores, and freshmen meet with their guidance counselors in a few weeks about it, unless they already have. Four seniors so far signed up to do the American Exchange Project this summer, so they'll be traveling around the country while some people come here. And we're still looking for more seniors to do it, but so far we have four, which is good. And the American Exchange Project's mission is to create a more perfect union. Also, last but not least, the Interact Club has the Pizza Taste Off on April 5 at the Cruzport. And so I believe we'll have some new people and some old people. Well, not old, but like similar people, familiar people, and everybody's welcome to join. All proceeds go to the American Cancer Society, so that's really good. I believe we have like almost all of the pizza shops in Gloucester going, and yeah, so it should be really fun. That's all I have.
That's great, thank you.
Can you tell me more about the pizza? Is that open to the public?
Yes.
It is, okay.
And what's the time?
Let me see, I don't think they told me the time. Yeah, they didn't tell me the time. They just told me that it's April 5. So I will find out the time, and I will, I will email you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being.
Close it out of the running.
Okay. Next item of business is a consent agenda. Anybody have any items they would like to remove? I just have a question on one of them. I don't know that we need to, but it was just a quick mention, because I didn't see it. I may, I don't know who else. I just wanted to know how many chaplons were on the seat. I didn't see it on the board.
On the, for DECA?
Yeah.
Two of the three kids, three students going and the two adults going.
Oh, okay. I thought it. The application was in a packet, but I couldn't determine it.
Yeah, so chaplons, so it says Christine Simmons is going.
Okay.
Chaplons, Scott Belmonte. Yeah, it's the two of them.
Two chaplons and how many kids?
Three chaplons, yeah.
Thank you.
A little update about students that are going, you're going.
Do you want to make a motion to approve consent agenda?
So we'll.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Maia Verga.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Reese.
Yes.
Chip or some Glancy.
Yes.
Next, we have deliberation on education issues and specific questions.
Great, thank you, Kathy. So, a couple of things tonight, I'll give a short report about a bunch of things that are going on, heck, been going on in the district, and then we have a team of coaches here who will help us understand all the great things that are happening in K-5, Percy and Matt. Let me pull this up. I just want to see if that works. Okay, so as we say, Gloucester Public Schools, everything matters. Everybody belongs. Students, staff, families, everybody. So a couple of things, so GHS students, we are working main levels for transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. So from O'Malley into the high school. And a bunch of GHS students and faculty members organizing elective activities fair that happened at O'Malley Mill. You can see quite a list there of different information booths that were staffed by GHS students and, and staff, robotics engineering, Greenport JRTC, theater, music, fine arts, foreign language, photography, metal fabrication, CAD, or CBT programs were reckoned out, were represented there as well. A lot of photos, the right. Greenport JRTC, an electric, Harvard Tech students, everything, things, demonstrations there. But a lot of energy well received, and I, as I always will, love what our students, as they always step up and help, you know, kids who are younger than they are, but also step up to serve and take a leadership role. So another example of how our high school students are doing that. Support the O'Malley students, and this, in this way, on transition, learning about all, so many different things that they can involve and participate in at the high school. So great work by the students and staff from high school. The annual Better than School Pie Parade, which I, which I experienced with her time. So every, that's on March 14, but this year was on March 16, because someone called it early release day in March 14. It's, I think, pretty well executed. But so what they do, I didn't bring a sheet, but at Better than School, this is, I think it's the fifth year, at least the fifth year of a pie day. And students who want to memorize the numbers of pi, so 3.1415926585. Wow. And I think at this point, that, Fusco, we're going eh. Anyway, by the end of the day, I could do, I could do 20, but the kids who are in the top, you see, Fork better, Carlos Ayad here, memorized the first 84 numbers of pi. Okay, second place would be it, Thune, 82 consecutive numbers, so they were neck and neck there. And then third was Natasha Sanchez, 72 numbers. So I saw Natasha go, I could not believe it. It was quite impressive. And then I day is wrapped up with, also, also attending that day was Ava Harrington, who was a three-time pie day champion, she's a sixth grader. She came back to help out again, older kids helping out younger kids, support them, and she passed her crown to Ayad. During the pie day parade, you can see there on the left with the big dog. Otherwise known as Principal Matt Fusco, and he's in the big dog costume. You can see for all this, Mia and Natasha there. So, very fun day. Our science labs were highlighted in a almost two-hour episode of Cape Van today. They thought it could be an hour, but they got so much great filming and students speaking and teachers speaking and showing a lot of B-roll as well, of folks working in the lab there. You can see that on our Facebook page, it has a link to it. You're hoping maybe to cut down, make some shorter snippets that are more easy to watchable, but it's just a fantastic production by the 16, one of the studios crew, but also with Corey Guru there and Heather Atwood. And then, of course, our management team, students, staff, Amy Donnelly helped out a lot. Abe Brown did as well, and Mike Gatton was a big help too, so just a nice job. And then here we have the, once again, annual Cape Van Regional Career and Educational Management Fair. So this is what used to be known as a college, a college fair. It's now, it's now college and career. We hope to hear at the fieldhouse, when we have the best facility anywhere on Cape Van for this type of event. And it's sponsored by the Cape Van, great Cape Van, Cape Van Tamper Commerce. And also a lot of effort on our staff, our audience, Laura Carlson, and others. There were 80 colleges and universities and about representatives from about 40 local businesses, all trying to help kids understand and make decisions and be informed about their next, their next step beyond graduation. So a great, great day, after, evening rather. And, and then glad it's here, that's back up and running. And then, again, the, the DECA conference here, as we just, you just approved the trip, and that's a culmination of the work that DECA has done this year. So a bunch of folks were involved in the State Career Development Conference, which took place in Austin. So a bunch of, Isla, Isla, Isla Black, Jessica Harvey, Bellia Rin competed, but also Carol Ryan competed as well. And just did a great job. They presented things on, on financial consulting, on banking, principles of business, principles of marketing. And three folks, Isla Black, Jessica Harvey, and Bellia Rin will be moving on to compete at the, at the national conference and competition in Orlando there in April. Which is pretty fantastic. And so congratulations to them, and they've worked, see a photo of everyone large. So just also really glad to see that five young women doing very well in DECA.
That's smart.
You're right in here, and not to speak that, seeing as it's round by level. And I can say, it's like, mom, my two sisters also probably know, would hear about it, but it is. Anyway, and then one more, a couple of things is, doing a great job with kindergarten registration this year. So I have really stepped that up. We have probably more than half our class already registered. So for this time of year, being, you know, mid to late March, that's, that's unheard of, actually. They did really well, and it's because we're doing a lot more outreach. So had kindergarten registration nights at each school, so we're doing that again. But also, we're offering mobile kindergarten registration. So you can see, we're having had already registration nights at Wellspring House, at YMCA. We do one of Pathways, the Housing Authority, and also at community centers at Riverdale, and also Willwood Housing. So those are upcoming as well. We're offering translation when we do do a number of these registration, mobile registration sites. And again, it's really having an impact, both getting out into the community. We're also going to all the feeder preschool as well. And doing presentations at the feeder preschool, so they know about registration, they know about our, our kindergarten upgrade is. We showed the video, I reached on the video, it's a great video. And so just really having a lot of success in terms of getting folks registered, getting families registered early. Which can help us, then, we came with them about events that are happening, you know, kindergarten events, the current kindergarten events, and making sure we're well connected with them. And also other pieces, help them with guidance on how to help their child be ready for kindergarten too. So earlier we can connect those families better. You're a great job. And then our last update here, it's Power Play is back as well. So Jeep Glock Ready Foundation, sponsored and presented and organized. A lot of support for ourselves, from the, our staff. They'll have to be taking place at a fieldhouse this Sunday, March 26, 11 to 2:00 p.m. And great support from Abraham Savings Bank, the Sorey Free Library, and others. But that's going to be a day of sort of afternoon of hands-on, screen-free play for all ages. We're going to break things in six Playstations, that doesn't mean the electronic versions. Okay, so also, and they're, each PlayStation, each station has a theme. The themes that's here are discover, touch, games, create, move, and build. So we're going to have a great multicultural approach to the power of play, and it should be exciting and fun for all ages, all families. So I think that's all I have in terms of updates from me, reports from me. And I'd like to pass it off to Ava Ascarrello.
Could I just say one thing? Oh, Power Play, I hear the Doc Siders will be playing.
Oh. With the guests.
With it.
The guests.
Basis.
And the guest basis would be, have to also.
What time?
I don't know what time we're going on, I rehearse with them tomorrow, so I want you to know.
Well, thank you, Miss, sorry for forgetting that. Thank you for the, for the log. Appreciate it.
So the door should be like.
Yeah. Yeah. Get there early.
Now you put it in practice, and now you know.
All right, so with me tonight are six of the fabulous nine coaches that we have at the elementary level. We have Melissa Francis, Alex Osborne, who are two of our literacy coaches. We have Jenny Emmett Conrad, and Shannon Brozsky, and the Eye Horn, Eye Horn, and Kristen Parsons as our now coaches. They're going to give us a, an update of what's happening at the elementary level, both with curriculum and some data and some progress that we need. And I think I'm kicking it off with. So tonight, we're going to go briefly through the data, and then talk about the new platform that we're actually piloting in a couple of the schools, and then give you the literacy update with the new principles in place. And then we're going to hand it off to the math, so that they can discuss their curriculum in a separate discussion group. So the M-Class is our new platform. You have heard of DIBELS that we've been using forever now. They were always through the platform UOregon, and now Amplify has taken them on, and they call themselves M-Class. And it's the same DIBELS eight assessments, but there's some additional assessments and some more efficient way of delivering and scoring the information. So we're really excited about it. But as I stated, a couple of the schools are piloting, and a few of schools are still using the UOregon this year. But then next year, we will all be doing the M-Class next year. So when you look at the data, it won't actually be from the M-Class site this year. We got creative and creative and created the charts so that you could still see all five schools, the entire district, even though this is not the way it will be presented in the future. And so if you're looking at the beginning of the year data, you can see, zero shows up. Do you have them? Zero shows up because it's kindergarten and the way that you have to format it in Google Sheets. It doesn't allow me to put the K, or it won't read it. So there you have it, trying to fix it on my screen, but that's fine. No worries. So that is kindergarten, not zero. So you can see at the beginning of the year, we had 95 students who are considered intensive need. That's okay with us, because we don't expect them to know anything that we haven't taught them yet. So we begin the instruction, and then you'll see in the next slide that things have changed. But this is just a glimpse at the beginning of the year. Because we are transitioning right now, I would say that we have the 58% meeting or exceeding benchmark at the beginning of the year for K through 5. And then the middle of the year, you can see 64% are meeting or exceeding at the middle of the year, K through 5. So we're making some progress. We expect about 70 or more percent by the end of the year, and our goal is always around 80 to 85%. We just made some huge instructional shifts in our curriculum. So we'll be talking about that and showing you how we believe the data will really be changing. So we consider the data right now our starting point because of all of the shifts in curriculum that we've made over time. But there's some exciting things in the data that I do want to point out. Yep, no, go forward. And I'm going to show you the samples, some of our strengths and some of our needs based on those instructional shifts. So on the next slide, you can see I focused in on K through 2, and it says, beginning of the year, and then the middle of the year, we were able to cut the kindergarten intensive need from 95 to 41. So that's a significant number. We were able to cut it more than in half. And this is, again, just from the beginning to the middle of the year, so we can assume that by the end of the year, it will look even better. We are able to increase, if you look, our exceed standards, so not only meet standards, but exceeds from 29 to 58, which is a significant jump. And these are real numbers, these are student numbers.
These are numbers, students.
Number of students, yes, yep. And then you can see the percentages down at the bottom as well. And then first grade, 71 to 56, and again, that increase in meeting or exceeding. So in first grade, we made a significant jump. And then in second grade, you'll start to see, especially to the middle of the year, we're slowing them down a little bit and starting to focus on that comprehension piece. So you don't see quite the growth in the fluency until the end of the year, because that's when they all start to put it together. So we'll see that huge leap there at the end of the year. And then if you look at the STAR data, this is really why we took on wit and wisdom, and we knew that this was our area of need when we were thinking about our curriculum and shifting was of comprehension. So the STAR actually measures the vocabulary and comprehension for our students. So I highlighted fourth and fifth grade. You can see, again, when we're talking about comprehension, we're not going to see huge leaps and bounds from the beginning of the year to the middle. We hope to see from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. But you can see that we went from 75 to 88 from fall to winter. That was a jump for us for meeting or exceeding. So just so you know, because they like to confuse us, in one platform for DIBELS, exceeding is blue, but STAR platform, exceeding is green. So it does shift, just so you can follow along with me here. It does change, but you can see that even from fifth grade or the meeting or exceeding, we were able to move that meeting from 44 to 61. And that, again, it's in a short window of time when you really think about when we're assessing them. So again, we expect to see more gains from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, but also in the years to come because of all the shifts that we're making in the curriculum. Question?
Yeah, well, I know, I mean, just, I'm curious more than anything else, Melissa, why don't you see the exceeding expectations? You know, I mean, it seems like it kind of, kind of stops right there at meeting expectation. Why, why is that?
Well, I think because we knew that this was our area of need, and we were realizing that children weren't bringing the vocabulary that they needed in the younger years to the upper grades. They weren't having the background knowledge and the understanding. So that's why we really have shifted, and these, all of these students, because we're talking district red, and we've only implemented in about 50% of the classrooms, haven't had the opportunity yet to build that background and to get vocabulary. So I really think that over time, you will see the exceeding mark really take off. Because just listening to the students and listening to the teachers in the curriculum, which we will be talking about, you can see the shift in discussion. The Socratic seminars, I mean, the conversations that we walk into in the classrooms, children are building their knowledge and really having a depth of understanding that they just didn't have before. So even in one year's time with our curriculum shift, we're really seeing an impact. So I believe it will start to show in the data as the years go on. Like I said, this, I feel, is our starting point.
And especially as you have, like, you know, kindergarters, you know, wit and wisdom, and then when they're in third grade, then we, second grade, third, that six year building, you know, I mean, as it should, you know, to really grow, you know, years opposed to right now. We're just seeing, like, half a year, no, for some of the kids, right? That over time should, should really build.
So just to give you a little glimpse of what the M-Class does and why we shifted platforms, I feel like every time we talk to you, we're like, we're making another shift, we're taking another leap. Because things are constantly changing and improving and growing, and we want to spend the most time really focusing on what the students' needs are and providing the intervention that they need and the instruction that we need. We don't want to spend time assessing them. So we're always looking for better, more efficient ways to be able to do the assessing so that we can get to the good stuff and really focus on the instruction. So we knew that DIBELS was really fantastic, and we wouldn't let that go. But then they offered it in a different way, and it really streamlined it digitally for us, but kept it the same for the students. And it gave us immediate information that we were able to use and structurally create, analyze, use for reporting purposes. It also offered dyslexia screening tools, which was really important to us because we know with Desi and all of the Massachusetts guidelines, dyslexia has become, you know, quite the hot topic. And it offered rapid naming, which is something we always did as an additional subtest outside of our platform. So again, more time, more, you know, more assessing, more pulling particular students. This was just part of their repertoire, so it was so much easier for us, and it was quick, efficient information.
So the data now lives in one place, so at a glance, teachers can see how their students are doing, which is really nice.
It's amazing. And this is an example for us. We have an iPad, so the teacher, as you see, has the iPad in her hand, and she's doing the scoring. But the, the student sees exactly what they used to see with DIBELS. So to them, nothing's changed, but for us. So to them, nothing's changed, but for us, everything has changed, um which is amazing. And then this is the sample right away at the teacher's fingertips that we can look at and analyze the student where before it was in a paper copy and we'd be flipping pages saying, oh yeah, this is what they did here. Oh wait, you want to talk about Johnny and have to go through, you know, sixteen packets to find that piece of paper that we were trying to explain what happened. Now we can just press a button and it's digitally there for you, which you've got to experience during the data meeting time, which is amazing. But just quickly looking at this, we can say, okay, the student isn't completely blending yet. They're at the starting point that they're still decoding, that they have some vowel confusions, and we can dive right into that discussion rather than taking the time to find the information to share with the teacher to get it to them. Um it's right there for everybody to see.
So this M class is a platform that allows you to do that. It's like a dashboard.
It's a dashboard. Yep, absolutely.
And does it fall under, or note earlier, does it? I've expressed this about, one of the, one of the problems I have is like, I'm a huge fan of wit and wisdom. Sounds like at O'Malley, we're introducing Amplify, maybe. Does it, does it? Is it cross-sectional? I mean, regardless of where that data is coming from, it can get to M class. Is that what I'm hearing? Or?
Yeah, so the wit and wisdom da- data is not part of this. This is a screening for DIBELS. So what it's doing is it's testing or measuring students' fluency and reading.
Yeah.
You know, their letter knowledge and the ability to blend and
Yeah.
um so it drives our instruction for students that are, if they're doing well at tier one with wit and wisdom and for this is probably more foundations related, the phonics of it. Um if they're doing well and and we can keep pushing, that's great. If we're finding little glitches, that's telling our coaches that they are going to recommend some extra fluency practice or they're going to recommend a double dose in foundations or they're going to recommend some sort of intervention. We've been talking about NVSS, those multi tiers systems of support. So this will derive instructions if somebody needs a tier two or an extra intervention.
Yeah, so we have curriculum-based measures and then we have standard-based measures. And these are standard-based, big picture to give us information about where the breakdowns are for the students. But then the teachers also have the curriculum-based measures along the way with the um programs.
Once again, I'm somehow gaffed. The way I would, the way I'd describe it is, um you know, if a child's having a glitch with their reading. What are, supported by the coaches, our teachers can figure out what part of the reading process that that glitch is happening. Instead of just having a sense or a guess or or, you know, a feeling, it literally can like dig down on this data and unless you can use all the terms I can, okay? And then, but the different terms these folks use show the depth of understanding we have with teaching readings. It's category different than ten, fifteen, twenty years ago because we really understand the science behind it. And 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 this allows us, like I said, quickly find a, 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 a different glitches, different kids that we have. Very powerful.
And it's the example that you gave us about the starting that helps us to analyze all our curriculums. From a global perspective, I think, you know, we use this data to assess.
Yes.
Yes. Absolutely. So our DIBELS would really assess our foundations. And then the STAR would absolutely assess our wit and wisdom. And of course, they, you know, go back and forth because one thing impacts the other. But ultimately, those are the tools that we use to really.
Got it. And we're gonna show you a little bit, a little bit more about foundations, GEOs, wit and wisdom, the pieces of the full curriculum. Because it's got so.
Um just to continue too, that there is a homeschool connection that's really well done in M plus. And it shows here because I figured, why not? Let's put two things together. These are the additional assessments that we weren't offering before, and now we can in a quick um way. Are they capturing the vocabulary? Are they able to use vocabulary? And they actually ask them two different questions about the same vocabulary words to really capture if they have the understanding. Spelling is another subtest that we didn't have before. We are again doing an additional subtest, different time, paper and pencil, a lot longer. Um and it's quick at their fingertips and assessed. And the rapid automatized naming, which can be confusing, is basically how quickly can I retrieve information I know and get it out? And that is a huge indicator for students who struggle with reading or have dyslexia. So that piece is wonderful to have here because we really, really needed that information for us. Because children who have a deficit in that area, we need to provide overlearning. We need to provide additional repetition of practice. And as Amy stated about the tiers, that's an immediate concern for us to say, okay, that child needs the repetition of practice in a second tier or even a third tier. And then we would provide this home information, okay, we want you practicing this, this and this because they need to overlearn.
Curious to know if you know off the top of your head, how the spelling part's going? I mean, with all the social media and everything going on in the world, I know it's kind of tricky. My granddaughter and I'm like, okay, five, five letter words have now become two letter words, right? They know what they're talking about, I don't. So how, how do you see the spelling part of it now that we're analyzing it? Instruction with social media and all the, the new way that kids communicate.
I would say that over the years, spelling has definitely taken a nosedive, no question. But I think with our curriculum that we are putting in place, um foundations really is to mastery for both reading and spelling. So I think that we are doing our part in education in school, but I can't speak to the rest. Like to highlight. Thank you. We spiral down.
What, what are the strategies for like spelling in general? I'm just wondering, are people still, are kids still using pencils? Or are they mostly focused on learning on computers when it comes to like?
So again, that's.
Knowing that like writing it out helps you.
Absolutely. So again, part of the foundations program, just as an example, and wit and wisdom, is we are trying to move um away from the digital all the time. COVID forced us into that, it kind of forced our hand. But we are trying to shift back because we do know that multisensory and that's exactly what writing is. Is you are writing about it, you're thinking about it, you're seeing it, you're touching it. Um so we are trying really hard to make sure that that's a piece, um that's a focus in our program.
And the foundations even starts in kindergarten with the formation of the letters. There's so much emphasis on.
Yeah.
Um, before I say that, my daughter's first grade and doing wit and wisdom this year and we've not done it. Then zero on my computer. It's all been, you know, just sitting with a piece of paper between us, having a conversation, playing a game. And I, hands down, I can't thank you enough for that because it kindergarten is very different. There are a lot of computer work. Um and it's just a big, big difference. Sure. My question, can you go back to the home? How is this being shared with families and when?
Again, because it's piloting this year, um we've had similar um pieces that we have shared in the past. Typically, parent, um it will go home at parent conferences or during report card time. Or, you know, the coaches will say, this means to go home. And I usually will send like a little class dojo message like, hey, this is going home. If you have any questions, let me know. Uh but usually we try to do it face to face during the parent conference time at the beginning of the year or when they're expecting information like that. And a lot of our teachers do progress notes and that would be the time. Um but it's always something that you have access to, so it's something you can ask for. And again, because it's a new platform, people are still learning. Um but in the future, you should see something like this going home. During report card time, I would say during our benchmarking would be the most appropriate. So beginning of the year, midpoint, and then the end of the year.
And um across the board or only if there's a concern?
Well, I think that it depends, and I think that's something that we could definitely discuss is making more universal. Um I, I can only speak to what happens at my school. Um we typically, I pass them out to the teachers during the parent conference time and say, hey, can you add this in in the conversation? And happy to be there if you need me and things like that. So I give them all of them. But I don't know for sure if everybody gets them. I'll be honest about that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just one person in the committee, but I would love it to be universal. And I think more information is the better. I think obviously there needs to be some support for staff around parents' concerns. There's obviously going to be a lot of questions around some of this. Um because we're going to be fielding a lot more, I think, by giving more information, but I think you're also going to discuss anxiety. And um I think just a little more information. We do this for a reason. And families really need to be a part of this conversation. Um and so far, it seems like a lot of this is unless you ask, um or unless there's a big concern that it's shared.
So this platform is only at three schools this year because of that. Yeah, so next year would be a year that.
Absolutely. And I keep saying, I really believe that this is a starting point. I feel like every time we come to you, it's something new and exciting and we really are just at the starting point. But I do believe that those discussions with the coaches will happen because we just told our coaches the greatness of this, right? The pilot. So then next year, they'll be learning how to use that and implement it. And then I would say the following year, we can really create those universal things, just like we have with the curriculum now. That makes sense.
Thank you.
So we're going to jump into the um curriculum updates unless there's anything else about the data. Um because we're really excited. We were always in a good place, I will say, with our phonics instruction. But we're finally in a place that we're all doing the same thing. Um so that was really exciting for us. Um that we are in full implementation K through three for foundations. So when I say foundations, I mean that we are teaching the same phonics rules at the same time in first grade, whether you're at Beeman, East Gloucester, Pomco, West Parish, it doesn't form that. It doesn't matter where you are. If you're in unit two, we all know what you're teaching. Um if we're in unit ten, we know that we're there with you. So it's really exciting because we can offer suggestions when we get together at PLC times or common planning times. Everybody's speaking the same language. And the fantastic thing about foundations is it does start with a letter formation. It has letter sound. So and it starts to work on both directions for reading and spelling. And then the GEOs, which is also fully implemented. Um and Amy, and yeah, so this is foundations. I'll probably do it when it's like that. It's probably easier. Um so this is foundations. So this is what the students basically see if they're living in a foundations classroom. Um and it's really working with the letters and sounds. And then the exciting thing is we also have GEOs and these are just some of the examples of the first themes, just because they were um easily accessible and beautiful to see, um basically. Um but they have reoccurring words and themes throughout the books so that they make connections not only in the school year, but also throughout the pathways from K through five. And this is the bridge between the foundations and the wit and wisdom. So GEOs are the connected texts, but they also have only controlled text. So if they're in the second book of GEOs, it's only with the skills that they've learned in foundations. Eighty percent or more of it is controlled and they've already been taught. So it's explicit instruction, but it also connects to wit and wisdom with their themes and their vocabulary in the context that they're learning. So talk about a great bridge so that they're learning both and building that background knowledge right from kindergarten on up. They start with picture, picture books with no words because in foundations, you're only learning three letters. Right? So then suddenly they're starting to draw in more and more. And by the end of kindergarten, they're bringing in all of that they've learned. And then in first grade, they start out with very simple and then move into the more complex. So it's connecting foundations and wit and wisdom every step of the way. This is our wit and wisdom, and we've talked about this before, that um there was four modules. And the color coding is actually um based on whether it's science, geography, um English language arts. And again, the themes will reconnect over the grade levels. So even though it says Cinderella, you would think, oh, it's ELA. It's actually geography because it talks about the different areas of the world and the cultures that are connected through the stories of Cinderella. Um and then they will talk about other cultures and make those connections later on in the grade levels. You're excited, huh, Bill?
We're giving it a different title. Simplify.
Um so this is just a great quote, and we're going to take you through the different pieces because this is really challenging to implement a program like this. It dives deep. It's a lot of information when you're trying to build background knowledge for students. You have to have background knowledge as adults. Um it takes time for the lesson planning. Um so it's required a lot on our teachers and on our students and all of us. Um so we have chosen as a district to really build the knowledge, the vocabulary and the language in these content building books. I'm so excited to see these books in the classroom. Today I walked into a third grade classroom and they were comparing and contesting two different books. And half the room was divided and they had the books out about space. And it was just so beautiful to watch and the kids were so engaged and so excited about it. And everything happens through, I do it with you as the teacher. I start, I explain exactly how it's going to go, then we do it together with guided practice, and then I release you to do it on your own. And it's a beautiful thing to watch in the classrooms happening. Um skillful implementation, this has been a change of um thinking, planning, building routines. The teachers will say things like, there are no routines. I don't know what I'm going to get the next day, you know? Because there's so much information and as you know, when you have discussions, it can take you in a million different directions with students and you're redirecting them, but we always tell them, just keep thinking of the four domains of language. We want them listening to great text and information. We want them discussing great text and information. We want them reading great text and information. We want them to be writing about that. So if you're touching on all four domains of the language every day, then you're doing your job. Um there's a module that you just saw, and then there's arcs within that, that they're focusing on particular questions and diving deeper. And it always ends with a writing task that they do. So it wraps it up nicely and we can really see clearly in their writing, did they comprehend what it is in this module that we were hoping they did? Are they using the vocabulary? If they're using concise language, are they capturing what they were expected to?
Um, yeah, just a question. So fifty percent of the district is using wit and wisdom at this point. So what, how do you envision, so next year will be full?
Yes.
So how do you envision sort of the transition for the students who haven't been doing it, right? So there, you know, it looks, it sounds like perhaps there'll be two different levels going on.
Well, I think that would be really the peer education. I think it's great because some kids will bring to the table like, hey, I've had experience in this. Let me help you. You know, because, oh, I know how to do that Socratic seminar. Let me help you. Um just as we all learn at different pieces and rates, it's not like they will be missing critical information. Like if the foundations example, if we did it that way, then if tenth grade wasn't doing it, they would miss out on follow teams, you know? So building background knowledge along the way, I mean, they experience inside school, outside school, all around. And they are still building background knowledge with the curriculums that we had in place before, but just not at the level of depth. So it's not like they're going to be walking in blind. And a lot of the teachers, even though they're not fully implementing, they're starting to explore and create some of that language and routines in their classrooms now anyway.
Sounds like you can say that last time.
Yeah. Um if we honestly, if you, as you know, you have to go slow to go faster. And if we tried to implement with everybody right now, we would be drowning. And truly, like, the teachers would feel that they didn't have the support that they needed. We, actually, this is the perfect slide for that. Collaboration is the strategy because through this experience of the slow rollout implementation, we've created PLC times that teachers who are working with it are working with teachers who aren't working with it yet. So they're hearing about it. They're seeing the manuals, they're learning as they go. We've created literacy leader groups, so the stu- the teachers who have been working with it are actually creating Google classrooms for the teachers who haven't or who will be coming. They're creating visitations and allowing people to come in and watch. Um all of that thoughtful planning wouldn't have happened if we were all like, okay, everybody's going to be the guinea pig. Let's go for it. Um so giving us the time of the slow rollout really has made the impact and difference that we needed um for it to be successful. And we're just continuing to coach along the way and we offer tons of professional development. Um I'm really excited about um the next slide. This is the professional development that we are offering along the way. So teachers are being trained every step of the way. Um and we're constantly getting feedback from them to how to make it better for the next time. Um because we're living and learning with this program and we just have to take it as it comes.
So the blue column is what we, the pilators last year were trained. So that was a while ago. Right. Um anything, well, this is current before yesterday, anything up to is what has been taught, was given to teachers who are currently implementing. Yesterday, you'll notice we were on the upcoming, that is the opening of training teachers for next year. We had the manuals in their hands for about a month now. So we, we got them manuals ahead of time so they could look at it, bruise it, they could go watch a colleague's lesson and kind of see how it would work. And then yesterday was the first um opening training of, you'll see several more moving forward um to support teachers um learning growth.
Is there, sorry, is there, is there a target date for everybody's going to be immersed in wit, wit, wisdom? Is it two years out? Everybody's gonna be immersed in wit, wit, wisdom. Is it two years out or?
September.
September.
Opening of school next year, yeah.
And then if I'm right, special educators also involved.
They did, but tomorrow, we have a special training, um. For specifically special education, special education teachers, EL teachers and title one teachers on how to support. Wit and wisdom with their students. Um, with our trainer, wit and wisdom is specially designed to train that they're just giving tomorrow to them. So they got the opening training yesterday. So it's an excitement. Tomorrow they get to go in and ask questions of how their role in supporting the program.
And which, which schools do we say we're doing?
So there, it's all five schools. Um, it's just.
And that's why it's easy to have folks, you know, here, work with, collaborate, visit class, share materials. Other folks in the school are doing it, even though they're not yet.
I was just wondering about the collaboration of the Chinese school.
And I'm not going to take you through the next slide and read all of the quotes, but, um, teachers are generally excited about. The program. Yes, they realize that it's taking them extra time to learn and to grow and to figure it out as they go. But just to see. How excited the students are about the learning and to see the, um, the writing results, I. I can't say that honestly. I really can't say nothing about the writing. If you, um, go forward. One more to that, Amy. I'm sorry.
You just go back. They don't, they don't have.
Okay.
If folks can take a chance to read to yourself. One of, here's the middle one on the other page. It was the top one, but it could be anyone, but it's the middle one. Three anyway, but, but just get a flavor without us reading to you. Um, and the folks at home too. This is just. Again, um, you know, let's say, I'll say again. This is not easy to take on for folks. They're getting a lot of support from their colleagues, you know, their teaching colleagues, their coach colleagues. But they're also really seeing a lot of insight, not only at home, as Smith said, but. But among staff, this is categorically different in terms of student engagement. That's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I worked in library many, many sessions with kids and we just tell the kids that read a lot from a young age. And what they would choose to, to reach for and be engaged in versus the others that weren't exposed to a lot of. Information or interesting topics. Same kid with the same book. Just having them exposed and learning about real subjects. As well as, you know, all, all the literacy.
Absolutely. And I think the writing too, and we've said this before, but it's so important to reiterate is. We would say write more. But the teacher, the students would always say, well, I don't know what to write about. That is no longer a problem. They know exactly what to write about because we are providing that depth of knowledge for them and that vocabulary. So they can express. They never run out of ideas. The teachers are actually saying. Okay, they have been writing for days. Can we like shred this down so we can move on? How do I do that? You know, and that's a really great problem to have, a really great problem to have. So this was just a couple of pieces that I captured, um, along the way. I just happened to walk into the kindergarten room. And they actually had just created, which is hard to see in these pictures, their first paragraph. And she calls it the hamburger bun because at the top, your first bun is your topic sentence and then in the middle is their details. And then your bottom is your conclusion. And they were learning about school long ago and school now. So they were saying they had to make a choice. Um, if they liked school long ago or school now better. And of course, they all chose now. Um, but they, and then they would talk about things that were different and they had the microphone, which was the most adorable thing because they had to present. And share their paragraph. And the microphone was out here and they were talking. Um, but it was just so beautiful to see them so engaged, again, listening to others, discussing. They've read multiple stories about school long ago now and then being able to write about it at the kindergarten level in March. Um, so it was really incredible. And then this piece in the middle was a third grader. Um, and you can just see. What a difference, you know, from the kindergarten. And she was asked to write about a C tool. Um, from all of the learning that they did. And, um, that was just a piece. So that's beautiful. And it actually says. And now add an illustration to add to the comprehension of the work. So I think that that is a shift to even the language that we're using. Add an illustration to, to the comprehension of your painting. Where sometimes it's just to draw a pretty picture and had no connection to what their story was about. And this is just more examples of that. And then this, I just want to end you with, um, because it is. From a student, this program is so much better than what we did before. We don't just read a story and move on. I like how we are reading the story and all the work we do with it. We are getting deep into the story and doing real meaningful work that I love to do. Very great.
All right, and now we're gonna hear some.
Right, our update's a little bit briefer. We have a lot going on this year.
Prince, she was verbose.
And I was trying to be brief.
Teasing. Um, as you know, we're in our second year of full implementation of math and focus. So we'll talk very little about our. Our curriculum and more about the way that you said it up. Um, going on for assessments, we continue to use ENI, which we talked about before. Um, which is that one to one, um, it is one to ones with students in kindergarten and first grade. Where we're looking for our number identification, sequencing and fine discrimination. And then for grades one through five, we continue to use the STAR three sixty. Um, which tests the more grade level skills and standards. We use that for the benchmark three times a year and I was monitoring throughout. Um, both ENI and STAR is what we use for data meetings, intervention decisions. And our enrichment rooms. We also have, um, in fact, the math and focus chapter test, which we, um, use more formally and. Um, some schools have been focusing on their chapter test question analysis at their ELCs. So we've been doing a little bit of a deeper dive into the. Alignment of where it falls in the, in the chapter and what teachers can do to make sure kids have adequate exposure to the types of questions. Um, that fluency has become our district's focus really. We kicked that off this summer with a book study. Um, and then we brought it back to the building level. Where we developed goals as coach team. We collaborated with other. Grade level teachers, so they had their goals tied with our goals and we were doing some. Fluency focus through the, for games, for this book that we read. Um, and then we also. Had some schools bring this back to the PLC and read, read it through in small teams. Um, as well as having teachers just read it on their own to inform their practice. We are pretty excited to share about do the math. It's an intervention. Um, that we are using all five schools, grades one through five. Um, it comes to thirteen modules. We happen to have all thirteen in every building. So we are really excited that we have stuck, stuck all the schools now. And then some schools have been piloting an assessment component for the intervention and they'll talk about that. A little bit for data. Um, this is ENI, uh, kindergarten and first grade. It is really good. You can see we have a side by side analysis from fall to winter. Pretty excited to get to the end of the year so we can show you the progress there. Um, but you can see we have currently, or this is actually old data from January, but we had seventy percent. Um, meeting expectations at our winter benchmark in kindergarten. Um, and you can see we also moved, um, students from yellow and red down into that green category. Um, and in first grade, we are at sixty nine, so just, just behind kindergarten. Again, moving red and yellow. Our goal is eighty five percent for the spring and I'm feeling very confident that we'll get there. Um, next you'll see some STAR data. We have increased green in all grade levels while also decreasing. Yellow and red at all grade levels, first, first and third there. And then I think you can quickly see it. Um, on. Fourth, fourth and fifth, yes. We use STAR data. Um, we look at it by grade level as a total, which is what you see here. We'll look at it across the, you know, the districts and look like you had said before. Um, to give us information on the curriculum and then we'll look at it by. Home room or grade level, school based, and then by home rooms. Um, and then we will also dive deeper and look at it at the student level. We use that individual data for child study, student intervention groupings, as well as our enrichment groupings. So not only do we look at it as across the whole grade. But at that individual level.
Can I get a few questions? So there's a dramatic change from the early grades to the later grades. And. By fifth, right? So here we start with lots of green. Um, and by fifth grade, um, there's more yellow than green.
Yes, I anticipated that you would ask that question. Um, I think that I don't want to use this as an excuse.
No, that's.
Um, is that I do think that the fifth grade and the fourth grade are still the greatest affected by COVID. So during COVID. Um, they did not have that master effect fluency that we would hope for. They did not have the classroom experience with manipulatives to really understand the concepts. Um, and just that general computation. It, it certainly was affected when we were remote, when we were using more devices. I think that's my. What else must I, we had discussed that as a team and. That fifth grade class, I believe we decided was the, it's second grade was when. And they had to go remote. And then third grade was when they were hybrid. And then fourth grade was they came in wearing masks. So that grade level, in our opinion, was hit the hardest.
You know, third grade is, is that really heavy shift for.
Right, that's what we, right.
So I think that we're, I don't want to say COVID and be.
I do believe that grade five has had the biggest impact for the students in front of us as we can see kindergarten, grade one. Perhaps that's the least.
And. This may be beyond what I know anything about, but, um. My understanding that a lot of what they're doing now is online.
For instruction?
Well, like, uh, practice. I guess that's my question. Are they still?
No, no, the curriculum does not have them do much of anything on, online. Lots of farm model work, lots of hands on, um, the manipulative music at all grade levels.
So, so happy numbers is something that they use to practice at the lower levels, but that's an independent, it's not a standard. That's just the bulk of it.
Yeah, no, that's just like an extra, fifteen, an extra practice, whether it's in the classroom.
So they're doing paper and.
Yes, their curriculum is all, um, paper. They really have multiple workbooks, multiple workbooks, student workbooks and the extra workbook. Focus does, we have the platform where. It correlates, the online student version correlates with the workbook. So what some teachers might do is have the students show their work in the workbook and then put their answers in on the online platform.
For assessments, sorry, yeah.
Because that will give the, the teacher a deeper analysis on what questions the students are having errors with. And then they go back to the workbook to see the work itself.
And we showed you some of those reports that we were able to get last time if they were to take their assessments online, but.
Their data, their classwork's not online at all.
Great, thank you.
So this is some examples of that fluency games from the book that we had discussed that. The math coaches did a book study on this summer. Um. The purpose of this was for low stress practice of facts and strategies. Um, think alouds, listening to pairs, discussing strategies. We know that now. Sorry, I just mixed up my slides here. We know that research says now that time tests are not the way to go for mastering facts. It should be hands on, understanding the concept, making those connections from one fact to the other. So these games are where we'd like to gear what's more, and that's the route that we're going. Um, the games are introduced to school at the schools and then some of us send the games home to play. Siblings with parents, um, teachers can observe the students instead of giving the time tests. And then they can ask questions about their accuracy. Um, it gives teachers the opportunity to. Ask questions. How did you get that answer? Instead of just having the students write their answers out, we're calling it a day. Um, it also gives the opportunity for differentiation within the games. You might have some students that are trying to master their plus one facts where other students are ready for their combinations of ten. So you'll see a lot of differentiation in the classrooms within that. It gives us a chance to enrich our students and also work with our students that are struggling. And the observation tools, like I said, allow for more communication between student. And teacher and really understanding and getting a strong idea of where the students are at with their facts.
And this is what I was talking about when we set goals. We had different grade levels. It was really grade one and two, I think we covered it mostly.
And as coaches, we've been able to assess students one to one to really dig deeper into know individual students' best. And their strategies.
We have those one to one each conversation. We weren't timing it, but then we'd say, you know, it's what you're thinking. How did you figure it out? And that's how we determine which games and what site we put into.
Yes, those interview tools that, um, the previous slide. The, the interview tool is, um, excellent for whether the coach or the teacher administers it. In that one to one setting, low stress, as they mentioned. And gives us that information as opposed to that kill and drill type of thing. And then also as, um, the next one is just an, a teacher, second grade teacher who took the book study. Really ran with it and felt strongly implemented it this year and we've been working together and she feels. You know, that this was very different from the way she learned her math facts. Um, and how it helps build their confidence, um, which does impact their entire, uh, math experience and. These are those foundational skills that they're gonna carry with them, building blocks throughout, um, their experience. And at the bottom there, it's just a quick chart showing how. The program helps build their foundational facts, which we do with the Math and Focus program also. Well, nicely aligned.
And the order is not that natural, like that one, two, three, four.
Exactly. So you start with that plus and minus, um, zero, one, two, and then once they've, they call them foundational facts. Once they've mastered those. Then they go to the derived facts, which would be more like your doubles and doubling. Um, so the other thing that Kristen had mentioned was, um, uh, the do the math intervention that we now have at all the schools. Um, it's very hands on, a lot of manipulatives. Um, in interwoven is games, which keeps the children's attention as well. Um, there's progress monitoring in there. The assessment tools are fantastic because it gives them a pre. And a post that some of us are piloting. Um, and it really dissects. Where the need is and where their strengths are. Um, maybe you'll go in more to that, but, um, and then along the way, within each module. Our little show what you know type of, uh, progress monitors along the way to make sure they're making that effective progress. Um, we have used it last year at the summer learning program and we plan to use do the math again this summer as well. Um, and it engages, engages students with a hands on learning experience. There's a lot of, uh. Talking about their math, talking about their learning, uh, and routines as well. It's an independent piece included.
Speaking on behalf of this, I actually had a student, um, a couple of weeks ago where we put the student in the intervention. And the student's progress monitoring didn't show much growth. So I pulled the student aside and because the teacher's, I'm really concerned, he shows more in the classroom than what he's showing on the STAR assessment. So I pulled him aside and I said, can you explain to me, you know, how does STAR go? What's going on? And he's. Flat out third grader said, well, I know if I do good on that STAR, I'm not going to get to do my math intervention anymore. And I really like the. I was like, okay, touche, you are. So we had to then figure out, how can we implement? Do the, um, this intervention in the classroom. So then the teacher. Pulled the intervention and is not using it as an intervention. She's using it as a supplemental for her table. So more kids could get that.
Yeah.
So we still got it and shocker, his scores skyrocketed.
I had a third grade teacher do the rapture component as a, as an intervention. And she said, wow, this is great. This really should be the introduction to the grade curriculum. And so she then. Took it and was doing. Station based.
And that is the beauty of this type of program. It, it isn't just solely to be used as an intervention. Teachers can use this also in their classroom to drive instruction. All right, so, um, some of the schools are piloting the digital.
All right. So, um, some of the schools are piloting the digital component, um, of the assessments. And so you have two reports here. On the left side, you see an individual student progress report. Um, as Jenny said, students take a beginning, sometimes a middle and an end of module assessment. After every fifteen lessons or so, there's thirty lessons in each module. And then on the right, you see, um, a group rating report. And so, um, you can see the progress. At the, at the time of this meeting, student have, these students have only taken the beginning and middle, um. Assessments. And so that's the, the two bars you see on the left. And so, um, for the whole group, we can see. How the students did overall, I see the assessment scores on the right, and it breaks it down into the various components. So just like reading, we're getting more specific details about the skills. And concepts where they're struggling, where they have strengths. So we've used these reports, um, in data meetings. Um, to evaluate student progress and to know if they're in the right group or not. We've, um, sometimes moved a student to a different group, whether they needed a higher level, um, or they needed. More, uh, more intensity of services going at a slower pace, or in some cases, we've moved them back to tier one instruction and they don't need the group. It's also been really helpful at child study team meetings, when we're, um, talking about students' progress in those tier two interventions and, um. What to do next with that student. Um, so it's been really helpful. Even within the same program, you, you can see here, students have different areas where the struggle is. So whether it's word problems, oh, I know with that student, I need to really focus my instruction. On the, in this program on the word problems, whereas, oh, three of those students have real strength in that area. So we can still differentiate within the program.
And last but not least, this is what I like to call the fun stuff. Um. The coaches and the math leaders right now are currently working on family engagement projects. The curriculum review that we had, um, we have teachers come and meet and discuss how things are going at their building in the math world. Any humps that there and problems that they're coming across, anything that they're having aha moments with. So it's a great way for the schools to collaborate. And make sure that we're all on the same page, because like Melissa said, with literacy, if a student goes from one school to the other. We want to make sure that that's a smooth transition, not only socially for the child, but academically as well. So that helps us all stay on the same page. Um, and then we.
Those meetings are, um, five teachers, one from each building representing their team. So. West Parish would send one grade one teacher to represent grade ones, but the five first grade teachers there representing decisions on, of first grade.
And we did that twice this year. We'd had one already and we're doing one at the end of the year. It's the same representative for both.
Um, and they, they're collecting information over, of course, the year note taking, keeping track of their pacing, so they're making time for. You know, adjustments and suggestions that they can make at their particular grade level and they represent the whole team.
It was a great collaborative effort. You have one teacher, you know, my students, I noticed are really struggling with fractions. So another teacher said, oh, did you try X, Y, and Z? And they went back and tried the strategy and then they'll come back to the table again and say if that worked for them. And if they need any more support. Um, and also, we had asked fourth grade teachers. What would you like to see the third grade teachers work on a little bit more? And then we asked third grade, what would you like the second grade teachers to work on a little bit more? So we did that. That as well.
We scheduled the, the grade levels so that we had the information to pass on to the next, so we strategically scanned them to have that information to pass down to.
And you know, of course, sometimes you see the teacher say, oh, of course I taught that last year. And of course they were exposed to that. And then other times they really get that aha moment. And it's nice to see the grade levels, they're starting to really understand why. What the expectation is for the one grade and why it needs to be taught explicitly for the next grade for true understanding. And then, of course, we have our math-based theme days that us as coaches decided to take on. We wanted to do more. Engaging activities for the students on specific days. So you saw the pie day picture. Um, we've also did the hundredth day. Here you see there was a backdrop and students had props that they could celebrate the hundredth day. Um. We also have a scavenger hunt that was put around some of the schools. So this is a group of kindergarteners. That had to go around the building and find the letter K for their grade level and then pull it up. And there was a question. Within those questions, we tried to put in kinesthetic movement. We tried to put in math talks to support that end of it. And then I even saw at my building, some. Third graders were looking for fourth grade material and they were pulling it up and working on that together. Or some fourth graders were pulling up second grade material. You know, you had your ELL students working with your. English-speaking students in different grade levels working together. Um, I had a fifth grader. And a kin, and a kindergartner walking around the building together, trying to find the letters. And then we also are doing stuff for Red Sox opening day and I think those are our only. Yeah, different buildings for different holidays.
Um, first, do you just moment saying which school and teacher you're from?
East Gloucester.
Uncle.
Uncle.
Berman.
West Parish.
East Gloucester and veterans.
My question is, as, as. This whole group is talking, I can't help but sort of think about the difference in. Um, our teaching roles, like some, some, I don't know where it is to what. Um, and I guess I'm curious. Do you notice a difference in a teacher's bandwidth? To access all of this that you're talking about for those who platoon and those who teach all of it. And that's a really big question, but it seems like this is a lot for a teacher to access. You know. Just one teacher.
I can, I can only speak to East Gloucester and say that platooning is the best thing to be ever did. Um, but I can't speak to say, like, if it's. Not working the other way, because this is all we know now for grades one through five, and it works really well.
I think that it depends on the teacher, and I think that it depends on the expectation, you know, and I think that it depends on the students. Some years you're going to have students that might benefit more from platooning, but another year you might have students that benefit. For being in the classroom with one teacher and creating that bond with that one teacher. So. It's a hard call. There's pros and cons to both.
I agree with that. There are pros and cons to both. I've done both personally. I finished my classroom career as a platoner and I would not have ever gone back to teaching at all, but that's a personal thing.
The one thing to keep in mind is that if you're doing all subjects, you have, you have, you have to have students. You know, you know, so I mean, that, that, again, that's sort of, it's a balancing or mitigating force. If you're doing it, you know, all this. For, you know, for both, for, you know, for all numerous classes. Um, it can be more. But you have, you know, you have to do this. On the key, you know, map or.
It's a personal, it's something just really love to have there.
Yeah.
And what's, remind me which school platoon and which one's not.
It's not a really, like, identified as like a whole school.
Yeah, because for example, when you have, when you have Berman or, or from West Parish, three. Um, homerooms, two, three seconds, uh, uh, it's not a, not an easy, um, platoon. You know, so you might have some, some that do in a grade, some that don't. Okay, because you have to have two classes of the two.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so that's why it's not just, you know, all school or not. But I mean, there, there are a couple of schools that do completely, right?
K one is self-contained and then two to five.
Yeah. East Gloucester's been wonderful for many, many years. Platooning from one to five. Um, and Especs is going to be taking the model of one to five platooning. Uh, but it really is a personal, not a personal, it's a, it's a decision that can be made at a, at each building level. Um, what works in the building. When you have three of a, a grade level, it's harder to platoon. Um, it. It's not always equitable, um, as far as splitting up the day. Um, into different chunks. So it, it's really depends on what works within the building. And then, or even sometimes a grade level. Sometimes there's a class that it just really makes sense with, and a principal or the staff might think that decision. Um, but.
And I think that's the beauty of our role too. You know, that's kind of our job is to hone in on our specific content. And help teachers, you know, the math teacher that platoons might not need as much support. As the math teacher, as the teacher that teaches it all.
You know, yeah, sometimes a platooning math teacher just wants someone to talk to and bounce ideas off of, because they may not have that partner next door.
Yeah, that is one of the. Exciting things, I think, about East Gloucester and that's coming together next year, and we will finally have a grade level partner. Um, for the literacy, so that they actually have someone other than me to try to. Not that I'm not excited about it. But it is nice that they will have a partner in their, um, subject area, that they'll have a teammate and they'll have a content partner. So it's exciting to see that coming together for four teachers in the same grade, it will be interesting to see how it all plays out, but it's really exciting.
And so that's like the pros and cons here, like you, West Parish might have three teachers that they all working together.
Yeah, they, they have a buddy to say, wow, that lesson really gave you a ton of. What did you do? What can I do? You know. Whereas at East Gloucester, if you're teaching one grade math, you're the only, somebody to talk to other than math.
Yeah, they'll collaborate when they come on a day-to-day.
Like your common planning time at West Parish would be a team of maybe the three classroom teachers, the coaches and, you know, make a special teacher. Whereas a common, like, say, East Gloucester, you might just be stuck with us.
Right, but the, the wonderful thing about platooning is. They'll always say, come visit me in the afternoon, because they've already done it once, so they feel like masters in the afternoon. You know, like, hey, this is my second time through this. I know how to tweak and change it. So it's almost like they get two years of practice in one year's time. So they really become experts, experts of the programs.
And what's just as exciting is that we do this with all you coaches, because there was a time we didn't have any coaches here. So while, while there's excitement with platooning, I sit here in the school, we remember excited about. Thank you.
Just a one question.
Bill. Question and I'll give a quick couple of comments. One is, uh. I, I sometimes get concerned about the amount of testing and monitoring, like. You know, that's, that's a lot of that goes on, you know, and I, I think the opportunity to kind of lose that. A one-on-one connection that a lot of students need. Uh, do you sense that at all, or is that just. Hard and possible, what we're doing now. There's a lot of testing, a lot of monitoring, a lot of measuring.
I think we're getting better at it. So we are spending less time doing it by finding out more information. And that's exactly like the platform that we're talking about. We're able to find out valuable information without having to spend. Oodles and oodles of time doing it. Um, so I think that we're doing a better job with less time with fewer assessments.
And that's like our back fluency piece as well. Teachers are walking around with their observations tool, which is a piece of paper, and they have no idea they're even being influenced.
He's just going ahead, okay, but that, you know, seconds where the student's not like, oh, it starts.
Right, they're playing a game and the teacher's listening to their conversation, but at the same time assessing what the conversation is.
Asking specific questions or, and that, and there is that intimacy when you have that interview type of experience as opposed to. Start and try to answer twenty questions. That's high stress also.
And that's also one reason why we've been trying that pilot for the do the math, where we may be able to do some progress monitoring in a small group of five or six. And maybe remove a month's worth of a star, perhaps, say. The example could be like, let's remove February's because we're, we're going to be. Progress on just those six students that are in that group. We don't need a progress on the other twenty students.
The second, the one, is, is on. You know, for example, the M class, that's a, that's paper pencil for the student. But it's being recorded digitally by the, by the code and others, and so we can get to access to that data. That's one piece is it, it isn't all, it looks digital, but isn't all digital for students, first of all. The other piece on assessment is crucial is, is purposeful. You know, and, and if it's, if we're doing, do it, or we're doing a lot of it, we're not getting something, that kind of information helps us. You know, then intervene or support or teach, or teach better. And that's a problem, but it's purposeful and we know also how we're using data, then it's value. Otherwise, you're just doing, by way, you know, measuring.
Yeah, and I look at it constantly as like, it makes that one-on-one that face, the face time. Because we just know each student better.
Absolutely. My, my second question is more geared towards. Uh, maybe kids that are on an IEP, especially, you know, kids that are involved, especially, um. One of the things that's important to me is that, uh, that. Kids, it seems like this is a good tool, and I think as teachers, obviously dedicated teachers that. You're aware of this, but that we're recognizing those kids that are improving and kind of building them up and saying. You know, in a perfect world, you know, parents are involved, they want to see the child. That's not the reality. So a lot of parents that are disconnected from what their kids do in school and. For whatever reason, it's just not a priority for them. And I think that you people are the only conduit. For those kids that can really kind of build them up and say, you know, he's pretty good at math, so stick with it. So just any comments on that? I mean, parents kind of, they, they, they sometimes. Especially with special ed kids, they're, they're not. General broad brush statement, they're maybe not as involved or as, you know, invested in that. And I just think it's important that. The teachers that are doing all this work kind of. Kind of promote those kids and let them know, hey, pretty good at this, so.
Well, the star assessment for math specifically, and I believe reading this as well shows a growth report, so. We don't always focus on if they're going to reach benchmark, because they may not, they might be a special ed student, but we want to make sure they're making growth. So that's a, a big part of. Our assessments as well is, is the growth there.
They may be from red to yellow or similar than yellow, but where they make the expected growth.
And that's a celebration that can happen between the teacher or the coach and the student. They can say, look, you have grown this far in here, you know, really build them up. But I can say, we witness it every day. There's, I mean, connections and celebrations within each of their classroom. We have some really amazing teachers and staff who build those, I mean. Truly, their only purpose in the day is to make sure that children know that we want them there and we're happy they're there and. We expect them to learn while they're there. And, you know, we set those high expectations and we want them to reach it. We know that they.
Yep. Last thing for me is just a comment on, uh. The work that you do. I love to watch people that are really good at what they do and.
It's just so, I'm literally your biggest cheerleader, right? I might talk to the public schools plus, I say, we do such a great job with wit and wisdom and math literacy and people involved in that. It is just some impressive stuff. If people want to question. Where, where, where are the last public schools? Start with this and then build off of that, because that really. Uh, it's, it's, I don't think I could be. Despite the fact that I think every, every fraction strategy was probably used with me. Hamburger bun analogy might help me. I don't think you could do that.
Probably because you were taught just not the strategies, but you were a process.
Yeah.
So you have to memorize the process and.
Money to their parents.
They remind the bro.
I got a question from my friend this morning, who was the first, her children are first grade two, and she said, please help.
Simply couldn't be more impressed with you.
So, uh, it's always hard to go after Bill. But two things, one is, from my personal experience, sometimes the. Um, the assessments are met with one-on-one. So like, teachers go one-on-one with. So that's, it's not how it sounds, but as a parent, I know that you guys and the teacher you work with. Meet and talk to students, so it's not all digital, even though it sounds digital. I don't know if that makes sense, but, uh, I experienced that, appreciate it deeply. Um, the other question is the, um, the tool that you. Um, the, that you use for interventions, but that can be used in classrooms. I mean, that sounds pretty cool. Is there a way to sort of introduce, it sounds like one of those fun, when I was hitting, you know, these fun enrichment boxes. So I think I saw a picture of that box. It's like, oh, those things. Is there a way that, I don't know if all teachers know that those are accessible to them in their classrooms, but it sounds like it's a good, a good tool that's. There. I know, I know you've already thought of this, so I'm not introducing anything. I know.
Being thoughtful of when and where to do that, like the third grade fractions, for example. Is a great time to bring that, do the math in, because it's one spot in the curriculum where they wanted to, the teachers. Because of the math review, all right?
Yeah.
Said they wanted a little bit of a, a boost to get them ready at a primer and they're, and they're implementing it. So it, it definitely.
So it it definitely envy will be as needed. Some of it's new to us. Yeah, we're we're that's really getting working through all the modules and certain some of the interventions we're doing will report back to us. And that's how that that example from factions worked it was a teacher who reported back and we we did that. Same with other interventionists where they can say this game was really successful. Students really, you know, understood combinations of ten of this game. And then they can say, let's take that game to the classroom. So it's as we experience and use all of the different components that we will be able to. Know which ones might be best for all students to experience. And like I said, we just got all of the modules, I think this year finally at all the school. They've just been, you know, the last few years stuck stuck in the fun.
And I think that speaks on behalf of our common planning times as well. That gives the teachers the opportunity to say to the coaches. My student or this group might be struggling with this concept. And that's when I can say, oh, I have a do the math module that will help with that. And that's when I can give it out as well. But I have teachers, one teacher used it specifically in second grade last year, and she came to me in June. And she said, I know you're going to ask for this back. I don't want to give it back and I want to claim it in September. I said, well, you can't claim it now, but sure, we can chat about it when the time comes. So as the teachers start to use it more and they start talking in the teacher's room and then they say, oh, why did she get the nine-sided dice with this specific game? I want that too.
And something else is that the specialized teachers that are doing co-teaching, um say veterans, they're also using some of this with their their small group pull-out students. And or can bring that back into the classroom. So as they continue to use that, they can, they'll be able to see the connection of, okay, this worked in my, you know, small group. And I can take this back into the classroom and share this with my, you know, with little partners as well. So hopefully over time and experience that will.
Just sounds like, I mean, I have heard in other contexts that the interventions are really fun.
So, you know, fun in a.
I'll have to tell my interventionist to take it down.
I will, I will speak to one more thing, which is that some love to have those one-to-one conferences with students and other teachers. At the buildings that I work asked us as coaches to have those one-to-one conferences with kids. Um to be a motivator, so we do show those reports. They create the front lines and they love to see their own arrow and edge and line. So we do often share those reports, not every class, not every grade, but um teachers who are familiar with with. Have asked us and what and so they show it to kids and then students will be like, I can't come, you show me, can you pull it up for me? And then they just try to be themselves really or either, yeah, or go on.
I just want to follow on what you said, you know, that's just probably one of the biggest, most important investments that we've made. Because I just remember years ago trying to figure out, you're telling me I worked to figure out our answers were terrible, right? And um this is just so much more important than figuring out that test. This is what you know should be being taught against the standards and against what kids can do really pay me up to a human level. Which is really, you know, from a, from my perspective, the most important thing is that kids know you care that they're learning. And and these pieces of of how you run the LA, you know, most parents have no concept, right? When you kid learn, you just either learn the routine to, you know, figure out how to divide something or whatever. But there's just so much more um breadth of information that can help kids master and really understand. How it's used, which is the most important thing as they continue going through the grades. So it really was probably one of. Our biggest, most important investments, and I'm sorry it took so long to get math coaches up to the scale. Um because we clearly got LA up to the scale sooner, but um. But we knew how important and just having teachers here with us with the enthusiasm is is to me priceless just to have. You know, people that truly care about kids, but also care about like the real materials that that we're using, um getting the difference. And that is fun. I was always. And you know, we make math a game. I mean, it's something like these kids, you know, really, that's the way you get kids to practice. It's not homework here. You can go home and play this game.
And get good at it.
Yeah, it just reinforces, you know, for me, math is all practice, practice, practice. So we should be asking, do you have any games tonight? Change the whole. Thank you for such a fabulous informative presentation. This is really what we hope people will watch our meetings, even if they don't plug in at the same time. But, you know, tell your friends, you do, we tell our friends, you do great presentation. We always. You know, as school committee members, people know that these are kind of the most powerful things we listen to. Consider and and our budget, you know, everything this is stays in the budget. It's not, you know, not even an issue or a question anymore as to what. We can afford it. It's, you know, what else? We not need, but this is what we.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to subcommittee reports. We have one meeting, the building finance subcommittee meeting of March fifteenth. And chairperson also is our principal. Thank you. So on March fifteenth, the full building finance subcommittee met. Um we got a report for health insurance. The numbers came in from GIC, which usually come in around the first week of March, a little bit beta this year. Um the cost of the plans changed. Um there was some increases. Um and then there was some decreases in some plans. So the highest increase was eleven point five percent. And there was a few plans that decreased about approximately point um five percent as well. Overall, the average, this is gonna get confusing because I'm talking about numbers. Overall, the average is about six point two four. And that's about the amount that we budgeted. So bottom line, we're we're in the good. Um Tops and Harvard Pilgrim merged, and it's those two plans that the cost decreased. Um always rebranded and they are now called Master General Brigham. Um there, they had an increased number of approximately six point five percent. Um many of our employees are scattered between the um Harvard Pilgrim and Tops. That's the one that merged. So a lot of the cost went down because they were on those plans. Um but overall, we're in good shape because we did budget and um. We, I think we budgeted seven percent. It came out to an average of six percent. So while there are a small number of employees that the cost went up, there's also employees that it went down. So the average came out um to what we had planned originally. So that's good news. Um for a budget update, we discussed increases in out-of-district tuition for two thousand and twenty-three. Um with a predicted higher forecast for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, as we know, costs of um doing business is going up. Um out of out-of-district transportation had an increase of approximately six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Um projected to be much higher in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. So when we were discussing earlier about costs, um that is something we have to keep our eye on. Special ed education for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four is going to be approximately point five million dollars of our budget. Um we do have a plan to pay that down using prepaid tuition that we save um at the end of the year. And start breaker money, we do other contingency accounts. Um but overall, there'll be an increase of over a million dollars as we proceed into two thousand and twenty-four. Those costs are going up. And we discussed the S R budget. As you remember, when we got that funding, we kept a separate budget. Um expenditures went to salaries and stipends, um pension, Medicare, contract services, curriculum, playgrounds. Um I think we should be proud of the fact that the funds were used responsibly and they were managed very well by the administration, which I can't say enough about. Um because we were able to achieve our goals um to have positive student impacts with that funding that you're doing from um federal government. We did some budget transfers. Um as you know, anything over eight thousand dollars, we have to approve. Um so we had some transfers from food costs um to pay for the increase of food that's going up. And also some out-of-district transportation costs. Um we talked about the auditorium feasibility study. As you know, last meeting, we were going to accept a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars from. The Gloucester Foundation, which would um put us in a position to match and then increase fifty thousand dollars of out of our own budget. We referred it to be enough for further discussion. We got a good discussion from administration with some documents. Um we discussed the conditions of the Omele in the high school auditorium. Um it was also mentioned that the administration is in discussions with the DPW about the issues of the auditorium as well. Um issues like broken seats, the lighting is dim and not strong enough. Um our sound systems are old, the technology is old, some not repairable. Um we have to address some storage matters and also some privacy and changing issues are can be looked at as well. Um so the study will provide a review, review and provide an assessment for architectural designs. Mechanical engineering, acoustic and lighting and structural engineering costs for both those auditoriums. Um so we did take a vote on that, which I believe we're going to address tonight as well. Um we started to have a conversation about alcohol on school grounds. I believe it's in October, the Gloucester four hundred would like to use one of our schools. Um to do a function and they've asked to serve alcohol. We really didn't have enough information. So we referred that to a future meeting where we're going to have that group come in and tell us exactly. What type of function it's going to be. Are they going to be kids? Is it a family event? Is it not a family event? So that we can make a better decision on um how we want to proceed in their request to allow alcohol on school grounds. And then we discussed the building use agreement. We have our Girl Scouts. Um who have requested to waive their fee, which I believe was about six hundred and seventy-five dollars. If you remember when we did the building use um policy, we put in language that if someone felt they needed assistance in paying that they could reach out to us and they did. Um this is a group that did not pay building use last year and this year they got a bill. Um but with the agreement of the DPW, um which is also a motion for us to discuss tonight. We um are agree that they do not pay for the building use for the eighteen dates that they use a one classroom. Um they do still have to pay the fifty-dollar application fee, but um the subcommittee is going to recommend that we do not charge them for using the.
And then, yeah, they don't, they don't collect fees, right?
They they don't have a revenue stream like some groups do to um raise money with the. So with that being said, I want to do one of the action items.
Sure.
So the um building finance subcommittee unanimously voted to. Where is it on here? I'm going to read on the the um.
You're something, you're something the grant.
Oh, number three over here. Okay, um the we. We voted unanimously and recommended the full school committee with the Gloucester education fund, they can grant an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for a feasibility study. The Gloucester High School, the Omele Auditorium, the accepted and I saw. Um discussion. Good report. Uh may we vote, Maria, please?
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minion?
Yes.
Ms. Friends?
Yes.
Mia Burna?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yeah.
Jefferson Glaxon?
Yes. In addition, the building finance subcommittee unanimously voted to approve the waiver of building use fees for the Girl Scouts and I saw.
Certainly.
So there's a number of Girl Scout troops in this city. Um I'm just wondering if they, um I don't know how many, but I'm wondering if this is a privilege that would be given to all of them.
Can I just, so um. So if I mention that, um so something I, as as a building BNF subcommittee has worked through this and obviously. Number of pieces and parts, um something I've been very clear about is I don't want to create. Exceptions for individual organizations. We need to create rates for classes of organizations. Okay, so the one that that we're creating now, okay, is for youth serving organizations. We already have a different fee, so we use server organizations, but this is for ones that don't charge any um fees. Like they don't have, they're not charging fee for participation for their group. So the Girl Scouts is an example of that, but there may be others.
No, Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts does charge. I mean, any, so. I'm not an expert, but Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts is part of Girl Scouts America and they do.
But are are the are the troops charging the participants?
I think what they charge is like minimum and it covers the cost of like the badges and things like that. I don't, I wouldn't say. They can be the based on cost to run their program.
Right, no.
It's more or less.
Hundred percent.
No, I mean, the Girl Scouts of America is very well organized.
Right, no.
It's a lot of cookies out of it.
That doesn't go to the troops.
Right.
I know that.
Right, yes, so, yeah, yeah, yes.
So but I'm just playing devil's advocate a little bit here. We have a number of troops.
So it's not a specific troop. This is, I guess I might might even say that this is actually worded incorrectly because as as the as the BNF. If we voted is for youth serving organizations that don't charge a fee. That that's what we should be voting on, right?
Not the Girl Scouts. That's the new category.
Right, that's new category because we have, the other other category that that since since the original vote. On the uh change in the building use policy procedures, we had one other change. Now it's for these these high use organizations, discerning high use organizations, okay? Um so so that's a that's a class we created. Now this is be a second, another class, which is, you know, youth serving, don't charge users basically, you know. Or toward not or toward nominal ones, okay? Um because I I can't have another organization come, you know, that's youth serving, but it, you know, and said, but they got a deal, I need to. I'm not, I'm not going.
No, no, of course. And that's why I'm asking a specific question because this specific organization has. You know, they think they would all fall under the same category. Right, so that's my question. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's that the category is a conserving organization that has no revenue stream.
Right, right.
That all of those troops would fall into that category. So then for you.
So I just want to be clear that we didn't have, this is a new discussion. We didn't really go this far at BNF focused on the Girl Scouts.
So.
And talked about how they would charge six hundred and seventy-five dollars. For their fee and they didn't pay it last year and that's the documentation we got. I didn't, I didn't, my takeaway wasn't that this was a. A bigger ask, not that I wouldn't agree with it, but I just wanted to be clear on that.
No, I I I I'd like to show you, show the committee around it. Okay, what we. Share at the committee.
Eighteen dates, Girl Scouts.
Okay, so so one. Waiver no fee collecting youth organizations. We're using the Girl Scouts as example. That's the only organization we have that fits in this category right now. The only group that uses this um uh it would fit in this category.
So then the issue is the motion that came out of that discussion was about the Girl Scouts, not about. The waiver of the no fee.
Be able to do category.
Yeah, sure, sure. And that was, that was the heading. So I, you know, I I probably wasn't paying attention when the motion was made, honestly. I should have caught it. But but the intention is not for Girl Scouts. It's for these no fee. Yes, and then that's why I titled it very purposely this way, you know, I changed that when Gary first brought it to me. Um because again, it's not about the organization. It's about classical organizations.
So we'll probably have to do, we have to approve the motion that came out or not approve it, one or the other.
You men, yeah.
I think it's it's pretty easy just to, you could withdraw it.
Withdraw it.
Make it make a motion based on that heading on there. Instead of doing amendments because you have to vote on the amendment that voted the original motion. So you as the motion maker, you say withdraw the motion.
Right, I guess so I, so I'll do that. I'll withdraw the motion and based on the conversation we have. We had, I believe, would support the language of the new motion. We had, I believe, would support the language of the new motion coming out over, so I would say that. Which I don't know what that motion would be, I guess the motion, we'll wait till vote on the withdrawal, right? Who seconded that? When I withdraw it, someone has to agree to withdraw the second, no?
Well, you just vote no on your motion and start all over. Still, I, I, I think the least confused thing is that I'm gonna vote no on your motion.
Right.
And then.
No, so I would just withdraw the motion, but I thought you had to just say second.
I don't have my rabbit's hole cheat sheet for voting, sorry.
But anyway, okay, so the motion's withdrawn. So I guess the motion is that we will.
Before you make a motion, may I ask a question? So I just wanna be sure about the language, so we went from no fee to nominal fee?
So.
Can you go back to that?
This says no fee.
The no fee.
Okay. Just the fifty dollar application fee, no, no.
Organization charges its, its participants.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So just to be clear.
So we didn't have that discussion, to be accurate, yeah. So the, let me ask you this then, because I would have asked you the other night, if I had understood it better. How are you categorizing the groups that we intend to waive their fee?
So I don't intend with the, any group unless they fall into this category.
Right, okay, so who falls under this category, what is?
During BNF, it was no fees. So, so I don't know how to do nominal fees, I think more about that, but it was.
When you say no fee, what do you mean by no fee?
That I was, I was under the impression, understanding, say, I, what I understood was that Girl Scouts specifically don't charge a fee.
A rental fee?
A user fee.
A user fee.
Okay, and so, in order to create, so we have to, I wanna create, create any, uh treat other. Any user organization in that same boat, same way.
Right, no, I get that.
Yeah, so, so, so for me, the category was uh user organization that don't charge a fee to users.
So you mean, if I sign up, I don't pay any fee to belong to the group?
That's what I thought.
Because if that's the case, I don't know that the Girl Scouts fall into that category. Right, I'm not trying to make it difficult, I just wanna.
I mean.
No, we can, we can go back to this.
Yeah, maybe better, so instead of us guessing here.
Yeah, exactly, what about Laura's word of nominal, I mean, to me, but then we have to define nominal, is it under a hundred dollars, over a hundred dollars? Right, we don't have time to do that right now, I didn't mean to, we just have to find out.
We have a number of groups in the city that.
But do they use our building? I think the other aspect of our discussion had to do with, it's using one classrooms, so. And during school hours, there were just, you know, I think if, you know, I hate to have some youth organization form and say, oh. Be in school every day, everybody uses your gym, right?
Yeah, I mean, again, this also, this is multi-use folks, I mean, if, if any organization wants to use it one time. You know, charge them, it's not very, it's not a lot of money, okay? Um remember, none of our fees for a user organization are, are, are priced.
Right.
Okay, um so, I think, so.
This is the girl, the Girl Scouts we use as an example and they use a classroom twice a month. For nine months out of the year, they do it right after school, so the custodians are still there, so there's not a, a cost to that. So in that example is why we agreed to waive the building use fee. I don't know that we're prepared to do the work to find out every group in Gloucester, well, invite them and say they could use our school, so we would have to.
We don't need to, because we can look at what groups have been using our, our buildings.
Because it's for multiple uses.
I think Girl Scouts are the one, are the only group right now that, in this category that is, is using. So, I mean, that's why we only give you one example. I think.
So maybe we can do two things, maybe we can send it back to BNF to discuss what the category is gonna be and what the conditions of that category are. And at the same time, let's waive fees for the Girl Scouts, right? So back, so back, I'm gonna put my motion back on the table, but, right? Just so we can deal with the Girl Scouts that are using the building right now, that use it regularly, it's about people who use it regularly, but wait, isn't.
I would advise you against voting.
Okay.
For the fee, waiving a fee for a special organization, because then any other organization can, can come to you. And, and, and petitioning for the same exact reason.
But didn't, isn't that part of our policy, that they can ask for a waiver?
It is, well, for financials.
That's what I'm saying, right.
And that's what they've done, that's how I took this as um, that motion.
So right now, any organization can ask for a waiver.
Right.
And so it seems to me that it's a case by case basis based on this policy anyway.
Right, and that's what I thought we were doing, to be honest with you, I didn't understand what.
And well, I think it's important that we do have sort of a, a, a group that we don't charge for, it feels like. We're going to have to pay this case by case anyway, because our policy says that any group can ask for a waiver.
I know, but then wanted to come up with a policy where the groups that fall under this category wouldn't have to ask for that waiver.
Right.
So that's the ultimate goal, is for having a policy with a system, so.
But any other group could still.
They could, but they may not fall under these criteria, they'd ask out of a different reason.
But there's no rush on this.
So I wanna be clear, so it's going back to BNF to create a new group? And we have to figure out how we distinguish that group to be a non-be nominal fee group. Right?
Sounds like it's already been created.
Trying to figure out what we're doing, yeah.
No, nothing, nothing's been created, because you guys have got to vote on it. It's recommended, but I think it's.
But why aren't we treating this using the waiver language of our policy that we have already?
I, I think, I just.
Isn't wanting to be in that position.
None of it, I mean, you wanna be in a position where petition again and again and again, for individual groups, ask for individual rules, okay? What, what you want is you want to have the, the exception be an exception, okay, and it's rarely asked.
So may I ask, when you would see a situation where we're going to release the waiver? We discussed it.
Even know what that would be, I, I don't even know. Oh, okay.
Sorry, I mean, I should ask that, we can ask that, we can discuss it. So, are our motions off the table?
Yeah, you only made one, you were through it, and we talked about another one, but it was never made.
That was awesome. Can't wait to go back. Okay. Thank you, that was good and entertaining, um, okay, um, another action, so we'll move on to. The other action items, um, first one is approval to continue the inter-district school choice policy. JFBV, I salute, second. Okay, to be clear, this is the policy where we.
I'm gonna show, show, show folks this.
And we approve this every year, we approve this every year without other students coming to.
We, we can't stop students from leaving, but we had to accept taking students in.
We have to vote to accept.
Yeah.
Oh, so this is the vote to choose school choice?
Yes.
Not, okay.
Like other districts.
Yeah.
Right, we have to do it by March, we have to do it by March.
Yeah, so, so we just show folks this. So a lot of. Well, this, this JFBV, it is families choosing between districts, okay, so that we will allow. Uh our school, our students to go to other districts and allow other districts' students.
No, we can't stop kids from going out.
No, they come here.
Right, this vote is only saying, we'll, we'll.
Both, go to.
So they're accepting school choice, not necessarily accepting policy.
No, every year we have to vote and report to the state whether or not we're participating in the state's, the state program. Inter-district reports is a state program, we better report state, other than that, we are continuing to participate.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just wanna be.
But that's not what the vote is on the thing, that it's to accept the policy, not to, no, it's to.
Continue.
Pro, continue inter-district school choice comma, policy file, blah, 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 so.
Just renew the policy.
Is this part of this policy that we are, we need to be in compliance with the state, okay? So I have a.
I just wanted to make sure we clarify for the, for the public, because people, because we have a lot of. People leaving the district costs us a lot of money, because I just don't do it, you know, it's like, we, we can't stop kids from leaving, we're gonna pay it one way or another. But we don't have a chance to do it, unless we vote for this, we can't take people in from Manchester, Essex, Rockport or beyond, without this vote, which has to happen every year.
But since the policy is mentioned, I just wanted to bring this up, I don't know whether to bring it up on the vote or before or after, but I just don't wanna lose sight of this. We're gonna do the vote first, because I wanna refer it. Okay, not this piece, okay, so any more discussion?
So the vote is to accept.
You got first the motion and the second.
Yes.
Yes, um is this for a certain school year?
This year, two thousand.
This year?
No.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you, I'll call though.
Mister Melvin?
Yes.
Mister Minion?
Yes.
Miss Prince?
Yes.
Mia Burger?
Yes.
Miss Watson?
Yes.
Miss Weeson?
Yes.
And Jefferson Glazier?
Yes.
At the risk of extending the meeting, do you have some data on school choice and, and, and? It shows just what the numbers are, you've asked for us, when we did school, did enrollment report the fall, you didn't have the school choice number? You know, coming to January?
Yeah.
I have those now, if you asked, and should I show them?
Is it a lot of information?
Depends on how many questions I get.
You wanna show, show.
Into GPS other districts, so these are both from other places coming to here, okay, that is uh. Twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-eight students, okay? This is school choice in other districts by grade level. Okay, this is school choice out to other districts over the last six or seven years. Okay, but that did not include Essex Tech. This is, and this is the school choice for, for this current year out by town. Okay, so of course, students who live in Gloucester going to other school districts, not a six tech, okay? I'll try to break down Rockport a little bit, okay, this is Essex Tech. So, pretty consistent. Engineering as except this year, which is, which is an anomaly, is you have very few kids in the upper grade and a much higher. Typically, in the past years, you've seen this equally distributed across different grades at high school. This is an anomaly, I'm not quite sure why, but you see forty-two at um, at a, at ninth grade, a lot fewer at the other grades. Could be some new pandemic enrollment, I'm not quite sure, but that's different than what you'd ever see, right? It's been, there's been quite a bit of attrition back into Gloucester High, the master years from, from, from Rockport.
Remember that, yes.
Yes, and then this is the last slide, this is Rockport's, our choice into Rockport from Gloucester. Okay, you see on the totals on the right, two thirty-five, six years go down to one eighty-one. That's fifty-four students. Fewer now than there were, see, and you see declines at every area. But particularly at, at um elementary and, and the high school, in the sort of, then, less than the middle. So I think that's. One, I think that's interesting, I think it's helpful, and um you see particular, you know, kids coming back since um the pandemic as well, so. Um we'd like to see all of these numbers, people have chosen out, go down, um as you can see. Here, and gone out some recently, um let's see, go, go further, we're gonna educate all our. Gloucester family, Gloucester kids in, in, in Gloucester school, so um I like to see this continue to go down. Just wanna make sure, any questions about that?
Saying the efforts we made to give seventh and eighth graders information about Gloucester High. Important fifth graders information about Omele is always gonna be extremely important, otherwise.
And preschoolers.
And preschoolers, so, so you're seeing some, some of that, what to do, you know, it's not, but it's our, our team going to, to, we get homes. You know, that helps.
The class supplier, this tech program here.
Yep, the high school students um going and talking with all the original programs at Omele. Um you know, we can also improve when the cost percentages come down and then talk about um. Uh the high school, for general presentation, but there, but there's also, anyway, there's uh, there's also, I mean, the Omele Science Labs, you know, that thing on, on, on. Um and how we can utilize that more, you know, from uh sixteen twenty-three. Um our, our Facebook presence, you know, really published, you know, putting out there. Um you know, just the great work is happening across our district, and I think another, another area. Um I think, I think former arts is, is, is moving, getting stronger, again, more of our, our, but I think another area, you know, pushes. You know, the CAD programs or BOSS programs, any programs here at the high school, um some of the other folks don't offer to our degree. You know, with a great progression there, and be more, you know, publicizing those programs.
And for next meeting, where I need to report on the Boston. The writing awards that were just mentioned in the Boston, well, but I don't have the details. But we were the only school in our vicinity with kids who got awarded, so we'll make sure we highlight that.
I like that.
Something key, maybe some gold.
Oh.
Yes, I'll have to look for details. Okay, all right, so before we leave this policy, oh, yeah, go ahead, um I'd like to refer this policy to program. Um to see how, you know, how we have families asking about the. The redistricting that we did and their ability for siblings to get in as a priority. If possible, down the road, um after the plan, we did a five-year plan, but there seems to be some families that are lingering. So I'd be curious to see if this policy can accommodate any of that, if we need to add it to the policy, or if it's just a discussion we have. Um as ongoing discussions. About when we get to that year, will there be room, right, so it affects this policy?
No, I know, this is the, is it not in district, this policy?
Oh, that's the inter-district policy?
This is, yeah, this is inter-district, this is between different districts, so it's not.
Okay, then we don't need to do that, as long as the inter-district policy reflects that somewhere, but that. I don't know if we can modify that policy to say that we may be able to give a fresh show. Um for priority treatment, just should be writing somewhere, I mean, the school committee can work totally different in two years if. People didn't run, right, so just messaging insisted in a policy, so I would just like to see if that. Language needs to be changed, or if there's other safeguards in place to have that discussion down the road. Um but this policy I would like to refer um in reading number seven and eight. Um I can't help but wonder if, how we would address a situation where. A student who is currently in our schools. And then moves to another district but wants to stay in the school for the remainder of the year.
Yeah.
And I don't know that this policy covers that situation, I mean, um this says that you have to request by the beginning of the year. But when a student moves mid-year.
Yeah.
It doesn't address the issue um if, whether or not they can stay under school choice, knowing they were here for a majority of the year.
I, I know somebody actually personally who was in that situation.
So it's happened a couple times in the past couple of years, so I think.
Starts here.
Starts here, moves to another district, meaning like more to be in a Rockport. But yet, requests to stay here in the school to, to finish out the year, doesn't make sense to make a child start a new school. In February.
Right.
So um this policy doesn't address that situation, it kinda just gives it a cutoff that if you don't apply at the beginning of the year, then the answer is no. So I just wanna have that flexibility for what is in the best interest of the child, if we have the room.
But is that the vehicle for that to?
Yeah, so in this case, yes, because obviously there's room, anything is.
Well, that's a discussion now.
What you're looking at is, is number seven. Right, that advocates will not be accepted after the first quarter of this, of this school year, that very specific language keeps us from.
Keeping us.
Keeping us to, you know, the school without, you know, because, because, you know, you move districts, you have to, you know, move school, obviously. And they're not eligible to buy a school choice at that point.
And I think, I, I would recommend that we have a conversation that they can stay so long as it doesn't impose. A class that's too crowded, but the child was already in the class, what shouldn't change this. But I think, we just need to look at that language, so that if the subcommittee agrees. That those situations that don't happen very often, but have happened in the past couple of years since we developed this policy, can be addressed.
Yeah, I don't.
There you go.
That must be a nationality.
There you go.
We've been working on all the other policies, so.
So it's policy JFBV, and specifically around uh number seven and eight. Thank you.
That's a work.
That's gonna be that. Yeah.
Oh, because the other one is there. Thank you. Okay. All right, so we have some grants to accept, um, other grants. Um, I move that we accept the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education grants. Um, the first one is social emotional learning and mental health. On code three eleven in the amount of thirty nine thousand three hundred fifty dollars. This is for Gloucester High School in O'Malley. Second grant from the Department of Ed is Hate Crimes Prevention Grant, Fund Code seven nine four dash two. In the amount of forty eight thousand eight hundred thirty dollars for Gloucester High School. And the third one is the Mass Grant Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars uh for Gloucester High School. I salute.
Second.
And so, any of these matching grants or anything, or is it just grants coming our way? I mean.
All three of them are grants that we have previously had and. It's more money for them.
We have a local vote please.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Nina Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Chip, President Clinton?
Yes. Okay, um, then the second group of grants is also from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Amendments. Um, the first one is mental health, social emotional learning, fund code three three two slash three eleven. Grant, you know.
That's a duplicate.
That's a duplicate, yeah. Forget I said that time. Okay, Title One, Fund Code three oh five, grant in the amount of one thousand one hundred seventy five dollars. Title Two, A, Fund Code one forty, grant in the amount of one thousand one hundred twenty four dollars. IDEA, Fund Code two hundred forty, grant four thousand two hundred eighty two dollars. Early childhood, Fund Code Grant two sixty two, in the amount of a hundred and four dollars, and I salute. Discussion. Okay, roll bubble.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Nina Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes. So that concludes the action items, um, is Veterans Elementary School update?
Pressure on time?
Looks great.
I could borrow it on time. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're going to have a school committee uh tour. On. Second.
We're suggesting April fourth.
Uh, Tuesday?
The Tuesday is the third.
Yes, April fourth, April fourth.
Uh, we have two people that can't do it, we're hearing of their, right? Can't do Tuesdays.
The chair, we're gonna date, Stephanie, we're gonna date?
Come Monday, okay?
Not if it's a certain first school.
I want to see it, sorry.
Yeah.
Any Monday after. We really do want to get in the building sooner than not, because um it's just a lot of really good progress and things to see. Um, while it's still actually happening as opposed to going in and see.
Oh, that's that.
So it's kind of a lot done, but still a lot. From, I don't know, it's kind of fun to watch.
Yeah, no, I'm sure they do.
Forward, and um, we are now three months from substantial completion. So we are moving. Wait, want to check on it?
So. We are, uh, City Council presented by the door on the twenty seventh, Monday.
But. That may move.
That may move, that may move.
All right, so. Or we may, we take twenty fifth, twenty seventh, that's a date, so we'll have. And seven, this come in the making. Yeah.
What time?
Uh, three thirty?
Thirty.
Oh.
Oh, no, we have, we have negotiation.
Yeah.
You, they want him in Madrid during the day.
It's 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 not as easy during the day because they're a little bit.
Okay.
More dangerous. I'll have to step your job.
Yes, yeah, okay, thank you. That is, because they are doing a little bit of work on Saturday.
There's a work on Saturday, of course.
There, Saturday. Ideally. It's maybe less coordinating, I think, so, all right.
I might have to bring my.
All right, so that's um. Any other business, anybody wants to, will go judge?
Secondly. Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Minion?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Nina Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah.[1783.31]